This conference will now be recorded.
Yes, hello, you here?
Yes, uh, Elliot.
Got you, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the hour has arrived for us to commence our March 4th, 2021 regular scheduled meeting, the Board of Supervisors for Surry County, Virginia, and we are doing this meeting by way of virtual means, and at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Powell if she would give us our opening statement in reference to us holding our virtual meeting. Ms. Powell?
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice President of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting is being held electronically due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has made it unsafe to assemble or equorm in a single location. This meeting is being held by GoToMeetings as opposed to on the county's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, we are blessed to have the presence of Reverend Joseph Elliott, Associate Minister of the Tabernacle Baptist Church in Petersburg, Virginia, and a resident of Surry County to come and to give us our invocation on this evening, so I want to ask Reverend Elliott now if he will lead us in our invocation of prayer.
Yes, may we pray, most holy Father God, we come to thank you for yet another day. We thank you, Father God, for the assembly and the opportunity to serve. We ask, Father, now that the members of the Board of Supervisors will be able to work together to come up with the best ideas and the best solutions that will be in the best interest of the citizens of the Surry County. We pray, Father God, that all information that they receive, all decisions that they make will be based on facts and truth. We pray, Father God, even if there is dissension or even disagreement, that they will come together, Lord, and come to a decision on what will be best for the citizens of Surry County. We thank you, God, for each one of the members. We ask, God, that you would keep them safe, keep them healthy, keep them well, Lord, protect them from all hurt, harm, and danger. We pray ahead to protection when our leaves. We ask, Father God, that you would continue to bless this county. It is in the name of Jesus that we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen, we thank Reverend Elliott for being with us tonight and giving us our invocation. At this time, we do pause for a moment of silence. Thank you, we're going to ask if it would not be to imposition that Board Member Sister Judy Little, if she would lead us tonight in our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, I will. Let us pledge to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Little, at this time, we do call the meeting official open for the business of Surry County, and the first item on our agenda that demands our attention is the adoption of our agenda. Board members, you have before you the agenda for our meeting on tonight, and the items on the consent items are there, our public hearing, our new business, our presentations, public comments, board comments, county administrative report, reports, and informational presentations. At this time, are there any questions on the agenda? If there be no questions on the agenda, we ask that Ms. Chapman would give us a roll call vote on the adoption of the agenda for our meeting on tonight.
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried, first item on the agenda is our consent items. For consent, we have the draft minutes from our regular meeting from our February 4th meeting, the draft minutes from our joint meeting with the Surry County School Board, and we have our Dominion Energy Request for Easement County Crop D for Rural Broadband, our Rural Broadband Project, and we have the approval of payables for March 4th, 2021, in the amount of $619,533.75. Are there any items that we need to pull for further discussion? If there are no items need to be pulled for further discussion, Ms. Chapman, will you give us a roll call vote on the acceptance of the consent items for our meeting on tonight?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried, thank you. First item, the next items, I should say, on our agenda is the public hearing, a public hearing for proposal zoning fee for solar farms, and I believe that Mr. Harrison, our Deputy County Administrator, is on the line to give the presentation on our public hearing for tonight.
Yes, sir, thank you, good evening Chairman Elliott, board members virtually assembled, Mrs. Rollins, staff is respectfully requesting that the board approve the addition of a $2,500 solar technical review fee to the planning department's fee structure. This action would be consistent with Article 3, Section 3.2 of the Surry County 2018 Solar Energy Ordinance, and would allow for third-party review and consultation for forthcoming solar applications at applicant's expense. As you all know, we currently have several potential solar facility applicants and applications, and staff will need assistance with review. The proposed solar technical review fee will cover the expense of a third-party consultant that will assist planning staff in completing a thorough technical review of solar facility applications for Surry County. Any questions at this time for me?
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, are there any questions from the board for Mr. Harrison on this presentation?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Elliott, but I think it is a good step in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Little. If there be no other comments or questions or discussion from the board members on this public hearing item, we do now open up the public hearing to the public. At this time, we give the public and a time of three minutes to express any concerns that they have in regards to this item that is on our agenda for public hearing, public hearing for the proposed zoning fees for the solar farms. If you are here and you'd like to be recognized, please state your name and the district in which you live in, and you may have the floor for three minutes. There seem to be none, and to make public comments for the public hearing, so at this time, we close the public hearing. And it is before the board at this time, a request for an adoption for the proposed zoning fees, so it is in the hands of the board, can we get a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, Judy, I move that we would adopt the proposed audience change permitting a fee of $2,500 for the technical review fee associated with solar farm energy applications, and this cost would be borne by the applicants.
Thank you, Ms. Little, we have motion on the floor, could we have a second?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, a second.
It has been properly moved a second that we would adopt the proposed ordinance changing the permitting fee of $2,500 for the technical review fee associated with solar farms and energy application paid for by this company seeking the application. Ms. Chapman, can we get a roll call vote on this motion, please?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried, the next item on the agenda is new business, it is a request for a public hearing about Cavalier Solar LLC. Mr. Harrison, ball is back in your court.
Thank you, sir, again, Mr. Chairman, board members assembled, Mrs. Rollins, pursuant to 15.2-2204, as well as 15.2-2316.6 of the Code of Virginia, a public hearing is requested for April 1st, 2021, at 7:00 PM during the Surry County Board of Supervisors virtual meeting to consider Cavalier Solar LLC's application for construction of a proposed solar energy facility in Surry County, Virginia. The public hearings will consider a comprehensive plan map amendment, rezoning application, conditional use permit, a substantially accord determination, as well as a site agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, fellow board members, at this time, we do have before us a request for public hearing for our April 1st meeting, 2021, for consideration of Cavalier Solar application for the construction of a proposed solar facility in our county. Can we get a motion on the request for the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, so move.
There's a motion on the floor, could we have a second on the request for the public hearing?
I'll second that motion.
It's been properly moved a second, Ms. Chapman, could we give us the roll call vote, please, on the request for the public hearing?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
I abstain from this vote.
Thank you.
Motion is carried, thank you, we're moving right along, we have before us tonight our first presentation from the Prince George Electric Co-op in reference to the Rural Broadband, an update from Prince George Co-op.
Mr. Chairman?
Good evening.
Yes. I was just going to introduce the representative who is on the call tonight from Prince George Electric Co-op about to speak, Casey Logan, he's the President and CEO of Prince George Electric Co-op, and this rural band project is of course very important to the Surry County, and we are delighted to have him to give us an update to the board and to the system. Thank you.
Actually, Ms. Rollins, it's Lee Chapel.
Oh, Mr. Chapel, I apologize.
That's fine, Casey had another engagement, and I'm going to do my best to fill in for him this evening. Thank you all for having me on as part of y'all's meeting, is Delon on the call?
I believe he is, yes.
He is, Delon, are you able to get the map we discussed earlier today up where everybody can see?
Yep, we'll do it right now.
All right, thank you, sir. And all I've got is voice communications with y'all right now, so when y'all, when you get where you can see the map, if you can, please let me know.
Okay, that was on the screen, all right, it's on the screen.
On the screen, you should be looking at a map of Surry County, at the top, it should be titled 2021 Fiber Build, is that what everybody can see?
Yes.
It'd have a bunch of, it should have green colors, blue, red, and yellow. I'm going to go over this with y'all, I think this is the best visual representation of we have of the project that's going on in Surry County for the fiber deployment. There's a colored legend down there on the bottom right-hand side, it tells you what the colors are for the each section quarterly for the fiber build project. The two blue sections that are left is what's remaining in quarter one, there were some other blue sections on here, but they've been completed already, they've been changed to the green color. You can see a lot of the county is that green color already, that is where we already have distribution fiber deployed, and it is available to y'all's county residents, and most of those areas are Prince George Electric Distribution areas also. The one area mainly that we have left to deploy distribution fiber that is on our system is on the easternmost parts of the county, where you see Hog Island Road, Ellersley Drive, Land Drive, Mantura Road, and White Marsh, and I believe the road heading south there, it's not labeled on your map. That's one of the last major areas of coverage that's on our system that will be left for the 2021 fiber build. The two red areas and blue area center of the map, those will be Dominion Electric provided areas where we're working on a project in conjunction with them, they are also deploying fibers on their electric system that we are going to utilize some of. The yellow that is to the north in the center of the map, and the yellow that is kind of the most north point of the county, that's Claremont, and Marina Road, Marina Drive, you'll see that's where 31 continues on down to where the ferry is, that's another Dominion area where we're working with them to deploy fiber. So Claremont, going down towards the ferry, and our portion on the east, is still the major places that are left for us to get this fiber deployed throughout 2021. I will, I will note, because I asked this question the first time I saw the map, the areas that are left in tan on the map, those areas are areas where there are pretty much no census data points, there are no dwellings or houses or service points in the county. Does anybody have any questions on the map? The color code?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, this is Mr. Elliott from Claremont, I was just, I listened to your presentation, do you have any idea, general idea, when the service will be made available into Claremont?
I can't give you a date for service available, our goal is to get everything, all of the distribution fiber deployed by third quarter of this year. That would be the 12-count fiber, which is fed off of our backbone fiber, and at that point, start taking applications and service. Some of that, how quickly we can get those done will depend on the number of applications we can get in and where we get them in, but as far as giving you a date for a home install at Claremont, I can't give you at this point.
Yeah. Expand.
We'll last on the list, seems like.
Excuse me, can you expand on working with Dominion?
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Cheek, this is just for board members to make, ask questions and make comments, we haven't gotten to public comments yet.
Oh, okay, well, this one, he said if there were any questions, so I thought that I could ask a question.
That's from board members, from board members.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Any other questions from board members?
Yes.
This is Judy, I live on Colonial Trail East, and I guess we're all looking at our areas where we are located as board numbers, when do you project the east of Surry along Colonial Trail East on towards Smithfield to be done?
I believe you're talking about the area down towards Route 10, down towards Bacon's Castle, near where White Marsh, Hog Island Road, or further east than that?
Correct.
That's, that, our goal is third quarter to get the distribution fiber pulled and lit, so I mean, the best answer I can give you right now is June through September.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Calhoun, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mr. Chapel, Tim Calhoun with the Surry District, you indicated, I believe, that all the tan markings were for areas with less homes and less places to install this. There's quite a few homes on Colonial Trail as well as Route 31 that you indicate is Marina Drive, which is actually Roth Highway, and some out on Route 10 West, heading outside of town. What is your justification on, or how do you determine when you, once you bring the backbone down 31 and Route 10 East and West to get, to get service to those homes, like I live right off of 31, in between the town of Surry and the ferry, and then there's a lot, there's a larger housing development before my home, my development, what's your, how do y'all determine what developments get the service and what, and what don't?
I mean, we are planning to provide service to every residence in Surry County. As far as the order, in the third quarter, a lot of it will depend on which actual pieces of construction are ready first, some of it is dependent on, on construction, make-ready work, some of it is dependent on Dominion's time schedule, as far as the order, each one of those yellow sections you see on there is representative of multiple different work orders, which is how we break the work up to do the construction. And the order that they've gone in sometimes will be dependent on external factors, maybe holding something up, and something else may be done first, but all of, all of those areas are slated to be in the same 90-day period, basically.
And are you all still on task to have all of Surry connected to broadband by the end of 2021?
It's, the, the, there seems to be some confusion, and it's easy to get confused on what this project entails, it's not having every home in Surry County connected by the end of 2021, it's, it's distribution fiber available to every census point or home in Surry County. After that, or while that is going on, it will be homes connected, each individual home, and homes continued to be connected, I would assume, for months and months after that, as people apply for the service.
So if I'm applied, if I lived off of Route 31 between the ferry and the town of Surry, I know for a fact that they've been out there hanging the line on the power line, and if I've applied, and once you all get that line energized, is the next step to bury the cable down our road, and for those applied, obtain service?
Yes, yes, the next step, and what you're seeing there, I believe, between the town of Surry and the ferry, that is, that's Dominion, a company that's contracting for Dominion installing fiber, they are, they are working in that area, they've been working in that area for a number of weeks, that is their, what we call backbone fiber or main fiber. I think it's what you're seeing construction-wise there.
And, and will Dominion be providing the fiber to my home down one of the side roads off of 31, or is that going to be Prince George?
That will be, that will be rural band, that will be us.
Okay, okay, and then my last and final question, thank you very much for your time, are you, and how are you working with Dominion to deploy to the customers, is there a good relationship there, and everything's good standards and the schedules?
That relationship has been going, I wouldn't say well, that they, they're running up on some of the same construction issues that we have, whether in obtaining easements and agreements to cross properties and different things like that, but I would say all in all, that has been a good relationship.
Thank you very much, sir, for your time, Mr. Chapel, thank you, thank you for the question.
Mr. Chapel, one last question from me, this is Mr. Elliott again, would it be safe and fair to say that the Prince George Electric customers received the service first and the Dominion customers come in in after Prince George Electric?
I would not necessarily say that, no. I would not say, I would not say that all of the Prince George Electric members would be connected first, because a lot of that is going to depend on, on how, how soon and where the applications come from. It's, which, that part of it, we don't have any control over, if we've finished getting the distribution fiber saved, I'm just going to say from Surry down to where the ferry is, and that marketing has opened that up for, for taking applications, and we get applications in that area, we're not going to hold individual applications, if that makes sense, to get applications on cooperative lines, that's not my understanding.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any other questions from board members, Mr. Chapel?
Mr. Chair, this is Mike Drury.
Yes, Mr. Jury?
Mr. Chapel, good evening to you.
Good evening, Mr. Jury.
Do you know how many, the number of how many homes the fiber is presently available to in Surry, and how many homes have been hooked up?
2,079 is how many has been made available to, and 601 are, I'm sorry, 279 passed by, and 653 connected.
So you say 2,079 available?
Yes, sir.
What's, any reasoning, I guess you don't know, why these, the other 1,400 homes haven't been hooked up?
Well, they have not applied.
What is, what is your community outreach program to get them to follow?
We have tried several different means of advertising and marketing, and we have, they have, the marketing part is a kind of out of my cup of tea as far as the construction goes, but my understanding, they're in the process of connecting, contacting every one of the past But my understanding, um, they're in the process of connect, contacting every one of the past applies that we have have not signed up. Um, to try to get to some more participation.
What, what is your role with the project?
I'm, I'm over top of all of the construction for the project.
Who's, who's over top of community outreach? Do you know?
I, I would say that would, that would be a question for Mr. Logan, our, our CEO.
Yeah, I, it's, it's my understanding. And, and the reason I'm quizzing you on this is my understanding that Mr. Logan let the marketing and community outreach team go last fall?
Um, that is, uh, like I said, that, that is something that will probably be better discussed with Mr. Logan.
I, I understand, and I've got some concerns about outsourcing of tech services, which I assume you, you don't have privy to that as well.
I, I don't do technical support for the co-op. If, if you have questions on that, I can definitely get someone to reply back to you on that.
Mr. Chair, I, Reverend Elliott, I'm, Mr. Chapel, I appreciate you being with us this evening and giving us these numbers and field out. That's very useful. Um, but I have been disappointed with, I, I, great, I'm glad Rural Band's here. But boy, I wish Mr. Logan would have been with us and taken the time to be with us this evening. I'm very disappointed that he's not. Uh, when this project first started, uh, we were told when we allocated money to Prince George Electric that tech services and community outreach would be done locally. And now I understand that there is no community outreach staff in tech services. I've had experience with it recently. I had to call Atlanta, Georgia. So I really, really would like, and saying to Mr. Chair again, and to Ms. Rollins, if we could have a conversation with Mr. Logan. Again, very, very dis- great project, but very disappointed he didn't feel he could take the time to be with us this evening. But, Mr. Chapel, thank you for the information.
Thank you, Mr. Drury.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Point taken. Uh, we will see if we can get further communication from Prince George Electric in these areas. Thank you so very much. Ms. Rollins, do you have anything on that?
Uh, no, the, the only metric that I would add, uh, there are, according to the most recent report, there are fifty-seven pending applications. Um, so in addition to the six hundred and fifty-three homes, they have been connected to the service thus far. Um, there are fifty-seven, what we call, applications, um, I think they call it in the hop, I mean, waiting to be processed.
Uh, I, I appreciate that would, that would give us more to connect. Uh, but I, I do know that, because I get calls from constituents in the town of Clermont, if we were to get it here, the, the numbers would definitely go up. And, and, uh, the town of Clermont is dealing with Dominion Power. And, uh, I know he say, he wouldn't say that, but you can look at the map and see that Dominion Power customers are the ones that's last on the, on the, uh, even get to get the fiber to us. So, uh, we will note to see if we can get, uh, Mr. Logan to give us some more information. I appreciate the presentation tonight from, uh, Mr. Chapel. Uh, next presentation we have before us is the VITA Broadband Initiative, which will be given to us by our Economic Development Director, Mr. Yoder Yabri.
Good evening, Chairman Elliott, board members, Ms. Rollins and others that are on the call. I am excited to announce that Surrey County has won the 2021 Virginia Economic Development Association Community Economic Development Honorable Mention Award in the Population Category Two uh, for the Fiber to the Home Public Private Pilot Program with Prince George Electric Co-op. Um, this award will be presented virtually at this year's VITA Spring Conference on March 18th. Um, VITA has hired a third party to film this and will film our county receiving the award in order to show participants that are, um, virtually attending the event. Um, so in conclusion, Surrey County and Prince George Electric, uh, Co-op should be very proud of the award as it portrays a partnership's commitment to improving the quality of lives of our citizens and businesses. Um, and another thing I wanted to, um, let our, our citizens and board members, we are holding a Prince George Electric Rural Input Meeting on March 16th at 5:00 PM to answer these more granular questions we have, um, been fielding from citizens. Um, and I think it could give a lot of clarity on where the project is. Um, some of the areas, you know, I can say that were, um, Dominion territories. Uh, on February 6th, I'm sorry, yeah, February 16th, the SEC heard a case, um, for Dominion um, and Prince George Electric to have a partnership in regards to being a middle mile provider. Um, so they have to go through certain regulatorys through the SEC being a utility. Um, and that, that will be more discussed at that time. So I thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Yabri. What was it, what was the date again on, on the meeting that you just gave information on? March the 16th?
March 16th at 5:00 PM and that will be on this, um, virtual platform.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Yabri. Yes, Ms. 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 Rollins?
Yes, I, I just wanted to, um, again, reiterate, um, the presentation that Mr. Yabri just gave. Um, and absolutely with a project of this magnitude, we're gonna be faced with, with challenges. And it's good that we have these, uh, monthly engagement calls with, um, our partners to be able to kind of work through and, and get the answers to our citizens and to you all as board members, so you can be armed with the information. But this is a very important project for Surrey County and the fact that, uh, Economic Development found it, uh, um, fitting to submit this to the Virginia Economic Development Association for the award. Um, it speaks volumes to, um, this project and it speaks volumes to still the partnership that we have. Because Prince George Electric Co-op was the only ones who came to the table. It was time for us to give Rural Band to our citizens to improve quality of life as Mr. Yabri just stated. So I just want to say again, um, I hope you all are proud of the award. Kudos to the Economic Development Team for submitting it. And, uh, we aim to be involved with the community and, uh, we are very proud that we have received this, um, and we can put this in our trophy case. Thank you.
Thank you for job well done. Thank you so very much. At this time, we come to our public comments. Uh, at this, the public that have joined us tonight, if you have comments or questions or want to address the board in any manner, uh, you have three minutes. Please state your name and the district you live in. And you have three minutes for public comments. And I just wanna, uh, state before the comments come, I didn't, hope I didn't come off to be rude, Miss Cheek, but that following the protocol, that was just for board members to speak at this time. This is your opportunity to speak at this time.
Well, I, Mr. Elliott, Reverend Elliott, I appreciate you saying that. This is Diane Cheek from Surrey. And, um, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the protocol. Uh, I did want to be touting with my questions. Luckily, uh, my board member is available by text and I can text my questions to him. Uh, you know, tonight we've had a lot of good topics. And I appreciate the gentleman talking about, uh, the rollout of the broadband. I, I think I understood from the figures that we have like twenty-five percent have actually, uh, are, are getting, uh, the broadband from what's been rolled out. And, um, being a Dominion customer, I was just, my question really does central on how is it working with actually rolling out the Dominion customers? Um, and, and you know, and, and if you look at the map, that's a heavily populated area, so maybe you'll have a little more numbers. Um, I know, uh, for us, we have farms that are in the, um, Prince George area. So our farms can get internet, but where we live can't. So that's just a, I'm just giving you, uh, an understanding of, you know, the demographics of the community. And, and that's what Rural Band's all about, right? So, um, I do appreciate the, um, the opportunity to speak and, and thank you for the information.
Thank you, Miss Cheek. Will there be any, any other public comments?
Yes, Mike Eggleston here. Uh, how come the county is not using this presence to push the rural broadband a little bit harder? Uh, I've had it since the very beginning and I've got five or six people to join it, but I've heard nothing as far as the county about pushing rural broadband.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Eggleston, and I believe that that's what, uh, Mr. Drury was making reference to, the marketing department with Prince George Electric. We, we're working with them. The county is definitely working with them. And it is our desire to get as many customers, uh, connected as possible. So, uh, we take their sentiment to heart and we're doing all we can. We, we, we have, they have certain teams and, and things build up that, I believe that the COVID vac, the COVID situation stopped a lot of things that were being planned. I know we, they were planning, uh, to have some, uh, workshops at the rec center, but we had to, uh, cancel those because of COVID. So hopefully we can get, pick the ball up and get it rolling a little bit faster here in the near future, once we get the fiber to all of the areas in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There be any other, uh, public comments? Feel free.
Yes, good evening. This is Robert Chandler. How are you?
Mr. Chandler, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the EDA supported the broadband. We had a phone conference with county administration, the EDA and Prince George Electric in October of 2019. Prince George, and this is before we granted, the county granted the $5.2 million to them. At that time, the plan was that all Prince George customers in the county would have the availability of broadband one year after the funds were given to Prince George. The only out was that Prince George must come to the county to get a deferral in meeting that date. There was no discussion about Dominion Power people getting advanced connectivity before the Prince George customers in the county. Has the Board of Supervisors granted Prince George a pass on having that done?
Uh, Mr. Chandler, uh, as far, as far as I'm aware, that it had not. It was a year from the time that it started. But I think, I think it's, uh, what, what you're stating, it may be, uh, completely opposite because it's the Prince George Electric customers who have gotten the service first. Is Dominion customer, the majority, I know it's some, I know it's some that overlap, but it's majority of Dominion customers that, uh, have not gotten the cable ran to their area. So, uh, I, I, as far as an extension, the board, the board has not given an extension. That has not come before the board.
I just heard the gentleman, I just heard the gentleman say that he would not agree or state that all the Prince George people would have connectivity before the, the Dominion people.
Yes, but he, he could not give a definitive answer. That's
And I'm in that district.
Back to Mr. Logan. He could, he did not give us
I'm in the same district that Ms. Logan.
Yes, we, we're, we're experiencing the same problem.
I'm in the
Once we, we're gonna get I don't, I don't wanna take, I don't wanna take your time.
Granted. I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
I don't wanna take away from you. I didn't wanna take away from your three minutes. The, the board, the board did not grant an additional time. It has not come back to the board to, to decide on that. But Mr. Chapel could not give a definitive answer. That's why we want to, uh, make contact with, uh, other personnel. So what, what you're stating, it, it is correct, but, uh, we did, did not get a definitive answer tonight, which we'll be looking for. Are there any other?
Very much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments? You have three minutes. If there be no other public comments, public comments section is now closed. And we will be entertaining any comments from board members. Any board members have any comments for us on tonight? I was, I will start off first. I will be first with this, uh, then I turn it over to the other board members. I just would like to, uh, give kudos to staff, uh, expect, during this COVID situation and especially our emergency services, uh, Mr. Ray Phelps and all that have participated in the vaccine, the clinics, clinics that we've had in the county. Uh, they did an excellent job. I know, uh, the staff has been uh, feverishly working with the state and the health department to get the vaccine to the county. And we would want to tip our heads to them for what they've been able to do thus far. We know that we are, uh, ahead of some different districts. We're not districts, different counties within a district. And I know that that goes, uh, to the hard work that has been put forth and different letters that have been written to our state officials and cooperation with the crater district in Surrey County. So I just wanna tip my hat to our staff and Mr. Phelps for a job well done. We know that there's still work to be done. But we will let them know that we appreciate what they have done thus far. That concludes my comments. Are there any other comments from board members?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury.
Yes, Mr. Drury.
And I follow your comments and, and praise for staff and administration and, and the crater health district for, for the efforts with the vaccines. Um, it's been outstanding, as you commented. Um, we are ahead of other we're ahead of other localities and glad to see that. And, um, I think when I last checked, and this was before yesterday, around eighteen hundred and some people have been vaccinated in the county, uh, with one or two doses. Um, and I know some of y'all Saturday, um, I believe the Associated Press and a press report today and Saturday to, uh, to document some of this. And again, it's real pleasing. So, so great. Uh, my, my wife and I have put out a COVID flag memorial on our farm and we'll have to say, and, um, this is not to focus on us at all. Um, we did it for multiple reasons, but, um, we started this at the first of the year and there was a little over 4,000 deaths in Virginia. And, uh, this evening we were back up there and it's over ninety-three hundred deaths. And the reason I bring it up is that it's still serious and I'm not kidding you. Uh, there are more people still dying from this than we can keep up with. And, uh, so just on everybody's mind, we're sitting a little light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccine efforts, but it's still, still dangerous. So everybody be safe, wear your mask and, and so forth. So, but again, my hat's off, as Reverend Elliott says, to, to staff and everyone involved. Um, it's been quite an effort to bring it here. My second comment is we, we passed a, a fee schedule for the solar ordinance. And I know that we are on demand in planning, but I just want to plant a seed here too. Uh, when we passed the solar ordinance during my first term, we had said at that time, we'd go back and look at this ordinance and review it. Um, cause there still needs to be some amendments to it. Uh, so I don't, when we can do that or when staff can start that. I know Ms. Powell is listening in, but, uh, we probably need to review that solar ordinance again, um, to update it some. It, as well as I would ask that the planning commission look at the comp plan, um, to give guidance to staff, applicants and, um, uh, elected officials such as yourself. So anyway, so that's just my second comment. Um, probably need to look back at that sometime with some amendments and even some guidance in the comp plan about solar. Cause as you, as we note and have noted, there are many, many, much interest of solar coming to the county. And that's it. And thank y'all so much. And again, um, really, really thanks to the efforts of everyone with this vaccine from volunteers, staff, and thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Drury.
Mr. Drury, I mean, Mr. Elliott, Judy Little here, um, as a member of the planning commission, the person who serves for the board on the planning commission, um, I say the same, I agree with Mr. Drury. I agree with Mr. Drewery that we need to, um, look at it again and see where we may have fallen short in some places and maybe too much in another or whatever, but we need to, and we also need to be sure that we are following up with the one that we do have that is operational. I think there are some, um, housekeeping that they need to do to make the area look more, um, you know, appropriate. Uh, we do have people that live in the areas and one of our planning, um, commissioners, it is right in front of his house. And, um, he did note some things that needed to be corrected. And so, you know, just inspections and how we want these to look to the public and to our citizens is very important. And, um, so I agree with Mr. Drewery and, uh, the vaccine, the vaccination, I am just so, um, you know, happy and elated, um, of what Surrey County staff has been able to do along with its citizens, because we have a lot of volunteers that are working. And at some point in time, I think we need to have a volunteer day, you know, when the, um, COVID is over, where we can all, we're vaccinated, we can get together, at least with a mask on, however, to say thanks to them. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Comments worth taking.
Ms. Elliot, Tim Calhoun, and I'm not gonna reiterate the praises, um, from yourself and Mr. Drewery and Ms. Little, from the staff and, and, um, Mr. Phelps, uh, but they, no, thanks, thank you, uh, for them all for doing a great job. I just wanna kinda elaborate more just a little bit on the volunteers. Uh, I was there on Saturday volunteering myself and, and it was just phenomenal to see our, our county residents giving up their Saturday, um, to go up there and help with, uh, administering these 240 vaccinations. Um, when I was there, I, I was able to talk to many, many people. I was handing out forms and, and things like that, uh, to get them pushed through. Um, so like just, uh, a, as Ms. Little said, just much accolades for our volunteers, um, uh, to help out i- in this effort. It, it made it work so much smoother and, and, uh, and even though it took a little bit of time to get, uh, 240 people through, it was an enjoyable time. I, I did not hear but one negative comment. I heard many, many, many positive comments and accolades to the county for, you know, working very hard and diligently to get these vaccines out, uh, when we struggled in the very beginning. So again, thanks to not only staff and Ray Phelps and his staff, but to, to, to the volunteers. Without them, I don't think this would have been a very pleasant, um, distribution of vaccines.
Thank you so much, Mr. Calhoun. All board members have given comments, so at this time, we return the meeting over to our county administrator for the county administrator's report.
Well, good evening, members of the board of supervisors and to the citizens of Surrey County. Um, your comments and my comments, I want to be in sync tonight. Um, you know, March 21 is upon us and it essentially has earmarked one year, um, since we have begun meeting like this, board members. It has been a journey and nevertheless, we are very blessed and very grateful for the spirit and unity in this community. While we have changed the way we work, live and enjoy activities since last March, we are proud of our service delivery during this pandemic and of our accomplishments to date. The challenges that we continue to face daily, COVID and otherwise, are those that many local governments are facing, and surely our own serious specific circumstances do keep us engaged. In the process, we are forced to consistently and strategically think about how we as an organization can work and deliver services smarter. Unity in the community at work, we have already talked about it. We have had many defining moments that attest to our resiliency and resolve as a county, realizing that it's bigger than us individually, that, that there is no I in team, but there is one in unity. And when we come together, unify to achieve a common goal, what a difference it makes. The recent vaccination clinics that you just alluded to in the county, how did a small organization pull off four successful vaccine clinics with a relatively short timeframe? Board members, you have already said, I know that you are very proud of this accomplishment. It was the countless hours of calling and responding to citizens, the strategic thinking and logistical planning involved, having to pivot and plan in a short notice. The countless days and hours of phone calls and conferences between staff, the Crater Health District, county, city and county managers, emergency service managers who advocated for Surrey County. Mr. Phelps and his team have done an awesome job. Mr. Urban Jones and also his administrative assistant, Mrs. Kinsey Chilcutt. So much positivity, as you all have stated, um, with this process. A unified process with the collective support and engagement of the school division, emergency services and citizen volunteers, county employees, local businesses who sponsored lunch, the patience and understanding of citizens, the positive feedback and carefree that you all have given. The county administrator of Prince George County who calls in employees have helped hundreds of your citizens. The community spark club who found it necessary to door-to-door intervention to inform our vulnerable population about the vaccine processing series. This was unity in the community and it made it work. So at this time, I know that you have already stated, but I think it is in order just to give a virtual applause, if we can, uh, to Mr. Phelps, the chief of emergency management, for leaving the charge of this planning. We are now a role model for this process and for all the volunteers who were just mentioned who made it work, thank you. And I agree with you, Ms. Little, and I had this in my comment, that after we are back to some sort of anomaly, we will have to find a time to more formally recognize the volunteers. So we can a virtual applause please. Virtual applause. And, and Mr. Drewery and Mr. Harrison, thank you for sharing, uh, the recent news clip on the Hampton University mobile vaccination clinic, uh, that featured Surrey alumnus, Dr. Michelle Penn Marshall. Um, we did have a conversation on Tuesday and we'll be having further dialogue to see if a mobile clinic can be part of, uh, the process of getting those vaccinated in Surrey who desire and need it the most. I want to report tonight that Surrey County Health Department, as you all know, it was only open on Wednesdays. Uh, the local health department is now staffed on Mondays, Wednesdays and Wednesdays and Fridays, as the city just said, one day. Uh, this was one of the concerns shared by the county to the health district. Uh, we are sensitive to the strapped resources, but also recognize that we desire to have these services here in Surrey County as well. Just a couple of staff reports this evening. Um, you have already stated, we do continue to be inundated with inquiries regarding solar farm operations in the county. Um, we get inquiries, Mr. Harrison and from attorneys, the applicants and citizens desiring to know more or to provide comments. And it's probably no secret that we do get more comments, uh, that are in opposition than in favor, than are in favor. Uh, however, uh, I need a little technical difficulties on my side. Okay, I'm, I'm back with you. I apologize. Uh, you should have received the material from Mr. Harrison on the upcoming hearing, uh, for its power, uh, which you are aware, uh, was, uh, denied by the Surrey County Planning Commission in its several meeting, but you should have that information. And I do concur with Mr. Drewery's statement, uh, that we do need to continue to strategize on how to best manage this process. Uh, our comprehensive plan includes layers of other initiatives that we would like to focus on by continuing to best handle the workload associated with solar farm applications. And Mr. Harrison, that we can administrate, has done a great job in this process. And, uh, thank you all so very much for supporting and recognizing that we need to supplement, uh, the workload in this area. Uh, as you all know, Governor Order, uh, Governor Northern has, uh, revised the most recent executive order as it pertains to increasing capacity limits for outdoor sports and entertainment venues. And as a result, Surrey County Parks and Recreation is resuming some outdoor sport, uh, and other activities with still the precautionary measures in place. Spring is almost in the air and, uh, they're having the spring soccer registration is now open through March the 19th, uh, to contact Parks and Recreation for more information if you desire or your, your child desires to participate in spring soccer. Also, all of the exercise equipment that was purchased with the CARES Act funding has been installed. It looks absolutely great. Uh, there are some plaques, uh, some use of that, uh, resource still with the precautionary measures in place, and that information is available on, uh, the, uh, Parks and Recreation, uh, Facebook page for those who desire to register, um, to use an elliptical spin by treadmill at Surrey County Parks and Recreation. Uh, under the order, again, social gatherings were now increased from 25, uh, were increased to 25 from 10 for outdoor settings and other detail, details can be found in the order that's included in your packet. Dine Out Days in Surrey County, I know that you all probably go to these other communities and you see restaurant week and so forth. Well, we are bringing it right here in Surrey County, thanks to the economic development team, uh, working, uh, the tourism coordinator, Dine Out Take Out Days in Surrey County. The economic development team has designated Thursday and Friday, March 25th and 26th as local dine out, take out days. We are encouraging citizens and visitors to support the local restaurants during lunch and dinner. Let's put our money where our mouth is and support our local businesses. A few project updates. Uh, Mr. Williams Project Coordinator, uh, advised that the roof project has many, uh, rain dates, delays, as you all know, the government center is near completion. And due to the heavy equipment requiring to be on the courthouse ramp, this project cannot start until the ground was solid enough from all the recent rain. Uh, we had to cover some additional areas at the government center that were uncovered when they commenced the work, but this has been taken care of. The courthouse itself will be closed on Friday and Monday for repairs, uh, to begin the mitigation work needed as a result of the roof leaks that occurred last year. Another project, uh, some of the Indron residents may have noticed some work in the town of Binger recently, and it has been to fix some of the rough patches that were left from the contractors working on the Dinger Waterline project. That work is now complete. The electric messaging signs for the government center in Hollybush Road have taken longer than expected. However, in the update received today, the signs are, uh, have arrived at Time Technologies Warehouse. They are working on the cabinet and the artwork and the back with lettering. And we should have some pictures to share, uh, the first part of the week. The mobile signs for the town of Claremont, Sarah and Dingeran will be delivered the end of next week or the first of the following week. And I do have just a little bit of information. Someone did ask a question regarding the, um, and I think it could have been Mr. Calhoun, regarding the, uh, rural band project as relates to Dominion. Um, Surrey, you have, uh, the citizens of Surrey, um, of the 395 ease nets that were needed, 385 have been acquired. So that is excellent. Um, the construction 10 miles of 39 miles of Dominion work is completed. And they advised that there were workarounds in about 15 or 20 locations where they were not able to acquire the ease nets, but they were able to use VDOT right of ways. And the timeline for Dominion is to be, um, done with the middle mile project, um, by early summer. We have a well at Surrey County High School that needs to be capped off in 2023, according to the school division in conversations with the EQ. Uh, we have been in discussion with applicable team members as to the options, uh, to get water to the schools. As you all know, uh, Dr. Sims has presented projects to us that pertain to fire suppression systems at the, at the schools. Uh, we are looking at options. In the meantime, we will be applying for a grant through the Department of Health, Office of Drinking Water, uh, to see whether or not we can get some grant funding to assist with this project. We do not know what it entails right now, but we do know that we are, uh, have that 2023 date that's ahead of us in which we will need to do something to that well. Budget, budget, budget. We have been in meetings with budget, uh, department heads this week. We have a few more to complete, um, next week. The school board, we take action on the superintendent's budget on next Tuesday. And while we continue to follow the county's request, I look forward to the upcoming work sessions, uh, with you board members to further deliberate the budget. Uh, Williamsburg Area Transit has informed us that they will be discontinuing services in the county on April the 4th, uh, budgetary decisions, and I'm sure more conversation can, um, we will be issued on that. The Department of Social Services will be sponsoring Easter Vehicle Parade on Saturday, March 27th, and they will include, uh, Easter basket giveaway for school each children. The parade will begin at 11:00 A.M. where individuals will still remain in their vehicles and will follow the customary parade route in town. More information, please contact the Department of Social Services. We have a few staff announcements. We have a retirement to announce in the sheriff's office. Lieutenant John Irons will retire on April the 1st. We wish him well as he moves into this new relaxed chapter in his life. He came to us experienced as a military police officer for nearly 17 years. He served in the City of Holway Police Department for over 19 years before his tenure in Surrey for two and a half years. Congratulations and sincere thanks to him for his service. Also, staff report, Ms. Antonio Rollins, our maintenance technician, has received certification in H Val from Centerra College, graduated summa cum laude honors in January. Congratulations to Mr. Rollins for this accomplishment, and I'm sure it would be a great benefit to our operations here in the county. Uh, board members, citizens, one thing that COVID has definitely shown us is how important it is to make life a little bit better, by showing kindness, true community spirit in a level, let, in a level of resourcefulness that will make our organization stronger to face the next set of challenges, because we know there will be those. I can't help but to step back, reflect and recognize how much amazing work is being done by so many in our profession, like yourselves and citizens, who come together in these historic times. It certainly helped us to bring this into perspective. I am encouraged, uh, as Mr. Drewery stated, that we are still in the pandemic and we all need to be very vigilant, but I'm encouraged that we will be, uh, in a better space where we may be to see and greet, uh, each other, uh, soon. That concludes my report. Thank you, sir. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for your report. As we all can see, there is a lot going on in the county, and we thank, uh, staff for the attention that they give to these matters, that we continue to move Surrey County forward. Uh, if we, if we have Mr. Phelps on the line, we asked that he would come at this time and give us an update on the COVID situation and the vaccination in the county at this time. Mr. Phelps? Do we have Mr. Phelps with us?
Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir, we can hear you now. Good to have you, sir.
Okay, uh, okay. Uh, good evening, Chairman of the Board, Board members, uh, Ms. Rollins and, uh, citizens of Surrey County. Uh, first off, I'd like to say that, uh, I appreciate all of the words of praise and the words of encouragement, and, um, we, we have had a, uh, an outstanding, uh, collaboration of individuals, every, everybody from, um, school board to, uh, county staff members, to volunteers that have, uh, it's really worked well together. And, you know, you, you try and, you know, when, when, when you're given a lemon, you try and make lemon juice or, or lemonade and, uh, and I've learned a lot through this process and have met up, uh, and I've been able to put a, a face with a, a lot of names and met up really a, a lot of nice people in Surrey County. So it's been a, it's been a, a great experience. Um, but to, to bring you up to date, um, approximately, Surrey County, uh, is currently has approximately 362 positive cases in Surrey County with seven deaths. Um, to date, we have provided three first round vaccination points of distribution sites, which we refer to as pods, and we have also, uh, provided two second dose pods. Uh, the county has vaccinated approximately 17% of our citizens, which is about 3% higher than the average rate of vaccination. So we, we are doing very well. We're, we're moving along at a fairly good rate. I'm, I'm pleased with what we've been able to accomplish. Um, many more citizens have received vaccinations through their primary physicians, um, the VA, uh, drugstores and other various locations. And unfortunately, we don't, we currently don't have a way of tracking how many of those citizens of Surrey County have seeked the vaccination somewhere, someplace else. So we're working on that with the Crater Health District and the state on trying to determine that. Uh, we are diligently working with new leadership at the Crater Health District and are looking forward to a much more robust vaccination, vaccination rate in Surrey County. So we've got a lot of things, uh, coming on board. vaccination vaccination rate in Surrey County. So we've got a lot of things coming on board. And I want you to know that a great deal of effort, and you already know this, has gone into the process with combined efforts from county staff. It's been a pleasure to work with Dr. Sims and the school board staff and a wide assortment of much needed dedicated volunteer citizens. We are so appreciative of everyone that has participated in this endeavor. We are always looking for more volunteers to fill every position, including those that are qualified to be vaccinators. We like to spread the wealth out a little bit. Come out and enjoy yourself, meet some people. And it's been a great experience for everybody. And I'd also like to extend a special thanks to Surrey Equipment. Surrey Equipment stepped up to the plate and and they provided lunch to all of our vaccinating staff during one of our pods. So I greatly appreciate what Surrey Equipment did for the county. To register for the waitlist, please go on to the county webpage, scroll down to the bottom and click on the Surrey County COVID Call Center. And you'll you'll have a number there and then you can call and and put your name on the waitlist for future vaccination. We're asking everyone in the community to reach out to our seniors and ensure that we either help them or guide them in the right direction or help them through this process. We're finding that some of our seniors are just not familiar with the process that we're doing. So we're asking everyone in the community to to practice the unity and community and reach out to those that are a little bit older, that may have broadband challenges or just the challenges of understanding the process. We're asking you to help those. We're currently uploading still in the one B category, which includes the seniors sixty five plus in age. Those that are sixty five, under sixty five with qualifying health conditions, food handlers, agricultural, and more. And once again, I greatly appreciate the patience and understanding of all the citizens during the pandemic. And I greatly appreciate the volunteers. We could not have put this together without the support of all that that we've been given. So once again, I appreciate everything that everybody's done. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Phelps. Once again, we do appreciate all the work and effort that you and your department have put into this process. Thank you, sir. You're quite welcome. You have before you the investment letter for the month of of March, well, month of February, before you give it to us by our treasurer, Ms. Ruffin. And the other items, get back to the agenda, one second. The other items that we have before us is for information purposes of the U.S. Census Bureau recognition, recognize the survey county for the twenty twenty census engagement, vaccine, Virginia partner update, stakeholders meeting for emergency medical dispatch, and the Blackwater Regional Library informational information that have been given to you. Are there any other business, Ms. Rollins, that come to our attention at this time that we need to cover before adjournment?
No, sir, but I believe the treasurer, Ms. Onnie Ruffin, may be on the call to give her report, the investment.
Okay. Is she is she there? I didn't see her. That's why I didn't call. Okay.
That's fine, sir. Okay, she indicated that she would be. Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there be no other business to draw the attention of the board of Surrey County, the chair now entertains a motion for adjournment until April the first meeting of twenty twenty one.
Mr. Elliot, so Mr. Tim Calhoun.
Have a motion. Do you have a second? Ms. Little, second with, Ms. Little has, Mr. Drury is second. Ms. Calhoun, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliot?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. We will be adjourned until April the first, seven o'clock PM. God bless you all. Be safe.
Same to you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.